Maybe I'll come down tomorrow and take a seat. Just tie it up a little bit. Is that right?
I'll call this town of Vonnell Haven Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024. Roll call: Tom Anthony, Lad Olson, Don Young, Leslie Dyer, myself, Elizabeth Bunker, and Madre Stratton. Number two, approve agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Three minutes, approve the minutes from the July 9th, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Five, communications.
Did you do the one?
Oh, I didn't. I jumped right over that. I always jump over that one. We were gonna cut that one out anyway.
Yeah.
It's too hard. Number four, approve and sign Treasures Warrant, number four.
Second.
One favor. Five, communications.
I just had one of those boilerplate letters from Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry about a new dock out on Dyer's Island. It's an application from Scott Libby, dock master of Dyer's Island Dock Owners. This is just a notice that's addressed to the municipal officers.
Good.
And I just, we just have to post the notice out in the office.
Right. Comments? Number six, speakers from the floor. And we will move on to eight A, paving discussion.
Hey, so I'm really excited. Jake and I have been working for both a month, but in the last couple of weeks, really hit the grindstone, put some stuff together. And I've got some, really what I see is really, really good, strong pricing to do around the Island Road, keep it in-house. The status is we're gonna lose that $550,000 mobilization fee. And we look at doing it in two phases. And the first phase would be to remove the pavement, all of the pavement, starting from Peacock as far as the dump start. Get rid of all the pavement, truck that to mills, which takes over the winter when it's cold and they can grind it. They will grind that for us. I have not got a set price from Joel yet, but I think it's gonna be very doable. And then we'll have the reclaim to put on one of our dirt roads to strengthen that and harden that up. So that would set aside for later on. Once we get the existing paving torn up and off the road, I'm gonna cost it.
Oh, God. Okay.
Madre was keeping it interesting. Keeping me on my toes.
Geez, nice save, Lizzie.
Moving on.
So for the first phase would be right around $25,000. Looking at, oh my God, what if we have to put a lot of gravel on it or such? The cost of gravel right now is not bad at $55 a yard. So if you're looking at even up to 40 yards, which there's no way we'll ever put 40 yards on there, it's still only probably, it's under $2,500 for that amount of gravel to lay on the road. But I thought is to fill that up, let's set for a week or so, and then we can move into phase two, which is to add a three-inch binder. The length, it will eventually be the length of the road, but I'm looking at doing it in three different ways. One, we can do, we're getting late in the year. We can do from Peacock Road to the transfer station, possibly to the airport, possibly to the end, depending on how the weather holds and how we do with the transporter. And we'll do nine trucks a day, which is not a lot, but anybody that doesn't have a plant out near that street, we have to go anyway. But for island excavation, they charge $5,200 a day. So for the entire job would be around $105,000 for them. Transporter's 1700 for a round trip, at three trips a day, and they did 19 days total of paving, would be $97,000. I've been talking to Pike also, their 19-millimeter, which is the binder, is $86 per ton. We're figuring 2,000 tons, so that would be $172,000 for that. And then trucking, we'll have to have six trucks from mainland, and then we're hoping to do three trucks from the island. And the reason being is three trucks come over on the transporter in the morning, they get off the boat, the three empties from the night of the front, our town trucks would go on, get pavement. They would go over empty, transporter would pick up the next three trucks that are full, while they go up and get filled. They come over, three empties on this side, those come off, the next three come on, and then those ones go over. And then the last trip of the day is our trucks coming over, being filled, the transporter rocks and those. So three trips. It's 1,700 whether they're loaded or not loaded. So we would have one trip going back empty. No, they're all, they're all full, I'm sorry. They're all full. So the trucking is, for them, is $116 per hour. And I figured the first one, if you'll notice, if you saw this before, my price was slightly lower because I figured it in at $100, and I finally got word yesterday that it was $116. So I just changed that a little bit. So that comes up to $105,792. So you're paying $138.90 a tonne, as opposed to what, what do you think that'll pay you?
That varied from up to seven, over $700.
Exactly.
Was one estimate.
Exactly. Four or seven.
So we're looking at $138.90 per tonne with a three-inch binder. Now, the total job estimate for phase one and two is $503,47. And that's the road, the entire Round the Island Road. The transporter can start August 9th and take us through quite a bit of September. There'll be spots, days where you can't go, obviously tides, low tides, side coming up there. So we're also talking, him and I are talking to the ferry service about landing at the ferry terminal on things that they can't land up there due to fire issues. So there's been a lot of going back and forth, but I feel pretty good about the estimate. And I'm, as is Jake, and we'll probably chit chat here in a few minutes. But, you know, we could, we could be going on this as soon as tomorrow, getting that tar up, getting the road ready to go, let it sit for a couple of weeks, water it. I don't want it so rough. Water it to, you know, for dust control, because you can't put down calcium fluoride.
Yeah, and sunflower, sunflowers on the road.
Right, yeah. It's regular, poppies, whatever. But, you know, we could water it for dust control if we need to, water tanks available and such. No calcium fluoride, because we don't wanna lock the fire coming from underneath. But even right now, just ripping that up, it's gonna be a cluster. It's gonna be a cluster no matter how you look at it. We have to keep one lane open, keep traffic going as much as possible. There'll be stops, just like there would be with any other big project like this. But I'm really excited and I certainly hope so. Hope you get on board with it and hope you save the town some money and put a new road there.
Do you have anything you wanna add, Jake?
No, I'm just kinda here to answer any questions.
Okay. I certainly don't know anything about tiring or paving. The only thing I remember is when we were kids, we used to stick our toes in the tar bubbles when they used to have that truck that...
The liquid stuff?
Yeah. But, um...
Now, Lad, you can talk about your kind of the feathers.
What is the, um, what is the three-inch asphalt binder exactly? I'm not sure about that.
So what's on the road right now is top coat. There's no binder on Round the Island Road whatsoever. And that's why the tar, you can see it sliding away and there's all the cracks, because it's three-eighths rock that's in the paving. And the binder has 17-millimeter, which is three-quarters of an inch stone mixed in with the paving. And that's what binds and holds it together. So it gives a foundation for future tar to be laid, if it's so easy.
And I could leave that out, too. I believe that we don't really need a top coat. The binder coat is a much higher surface, and it binds to the dirt, to the road, and it's, the reason to do a 9-millimeter, a 9-millimeter finish over the top is just there's not any rock in it, it's just pretty. But it's very soft, that's what you, like, if you put a motorcycle kickstand down on,
Right.
it will usually fall over, because it will go through the pavement. If you put anything heavy on it, it will, it will make a mark in the pavement, burnouts, it will leave holes and, you know. So I just feel like the binder is, and he's in agreement with me that, well, the three-inch binder, if you guys don't like the looks of it after a year, we can go a half-inch flip over, you know, of smaller sand, granular. It's pretty, that's all it is, it's just no burnouts, that doesn't bring it.
I'm assuming that needs to be rolled or not?
Yes.
Yeah.
How, how much of this is the town crew doing and how much of it is Jake doing?
So...
Well, basically, I'm doing the laying of the pavement to the paper and running the roller. So I'm gonna have two guys operating the paper, one guy operating the roller. Millie's gonna take care of the logistics, phone calls, having the flaggers out. Then setting rolling up with a water tank, the roller fills with water, you gotta put water down, pour the pavement, and play it. So basically, that's what Millie's gonna be doing.
We saved about half the crew, because you don't need flaggers, you don't need somebody driving a water truck, we have to open the signs, and any kind of, like, any extra hand work, you know, a little bit of weight in here and there, what have you. And we could also help out any other ways.
And with this, the stripping of the road, the town crew's gonna do that, or Jake's doing that?
We're going to do that.
Doing, yeah, so it's all, all of it is better. Because I just wondered how the other duties that they, that you've been going on, the town crew?
It, I think we're at a point where we need to just get it done. And I spend more time up there, tar patching and fixing little holes than the 19, well, it only, it's not even gonna be all together. Plus, there's gonna be space in between some of these trucks, you know? If there's something that needs to be done, I can break a crew off, but it's, it's not gonna be, you know, like, run, 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 except for the trucks. We will empty three trucks an hour and a half, so we'll have another hour and a half to two hours wait between the trucks.
So you have other...
You can go off and do something, and so can we.
Right. So you have other things that you have to have done for the, for the town, for the public works, right? I mean, to add to his point about work, just like, you have other things that you have to have done that you can do.
Yeah, but we'll be able to get it done.
Yeah, no, I...
Yes, I mean, we'll be, we'll be working hard and stuff, you know?
No, but...
But I believe it's, I think, I believe it's doable, and it's, you know, it's short-term, but, and if it works out well, then, you know, we could continue to do a section of road every year.
Right.
At a lower price and keep up on the roads. And I, I think that's the paving and making, you know, fixing some of those roads, making roads better again.
Is it worthwhile?
I, I just feel like, yeah, it can be done. And, and a lot of, like, you know, if we have a sign down or a pothole to build, we can send two, three people off, you know? There's still, there's still somebody to flag, there's still somebody driving a water truck, you know, the rickons here and there, and so on.
Is it worth considering as a little demo for the town, as confidence in all of us and everything, of doing this road out here, just to, as a trial run, to start out with?
I like, I like that idea, too, because we'll do a couple of things. It gives you a chance to try getting the asphalt older and, you know, because these are all estimates.
Right.
And estimates can change, especially with this.
Oh, yeah.
A lot.
For sure.
What are you pointing at, Adam?
Like the transporter.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and I mean, I've got Dave Whitney's scheduled me four days a week, starting August 19th.
You know, and if, if it does come out and we do save all this money, the, the money left over, we can do a test run on this road to maybe...
Would you rather do a test run from, like, Peacock to the transfer station and get that road cleared up a little bit? I mean, it's a two-lane road.
I'd rather use a road that's not a main road for the test run. That way, if it doesn't work out...
That doesn't sound very confident.
It does need it, well, it's a demonstration, not just a...
Well, it's a new, it's a new, new thing. I'm not gonna have full confidence in...
Yeah, but the people on the pavers have been doing it for a long time.
This, this road doesn't need it.
Yeah. I don't know, I just...
Well, I think if we were to do that, we'd definitely have to have an estimate. We can't just approve, say, yo, we're gonna go do this road first, see how it works. I think we need to figure out how much that would cost. We don't wanna, you know, jump too far ahead here.
Well, first of all, it's something we might wanna do, and then go ahead and get that.
There was just a, I just, I just don't think it's a bad idea to try.
What was more, then let's do that small spot, I mean, I just, I think that that road is in dire straits.
It is.
And I'm, I mean, I'm at the point now where I fill potholes, and the next day, somebody's saying, why haven't you filled potholes? Well, I've filled potholes, and, you know, it's, they have to be at least three inches deep to hold the tar. And if, I think we're at the point where, and we have, I mean, the people that are doing the paving are on the paper, are seasoned pavers. I mean, that's, they've been doing it for 30 years. And I get, I get being nervous about it, but do that first section and let it go for a minute.
Well, the only, I mean, I can see it from two ways, like, okay, you're not really sure, you're a little nervous about whether or not, how it's gonna work, but this road doesn't get any traffic compared to the Round the Island Road. So maybe that, you might wanna think about that.
If we do this road, we're gonna have to close all road back. We can't keep this road open and paving.
Yeah, it's basically one lane.
What would it take, a day?
We're gonna need more time to, it's gonna take more than a day, because you gotta bring the trucks.
Yeah, sure.
We have to measure it, figure out what we need, but, I mean, I have to pretty much do this all over again from this incident.
And you can see, Millie, not, sorry to interrupt you, you can see on the road, I went to the dump yesterday, and you can see where you hatched the road, and you can see where brand-new cracks are right there. So, I mean, it is definitely the worst road on the island.
That's where it is.
I'm just wondering, in terms of a total project, I know that, I mean, half of a project is mobilization, and I realize that your equipment is here.
Right.
But, I mean, once you get rolling on a paving project, you wanna keep it going. So how would, how would it impact your proposal to do this small road and then switch over to doing the bigger project? What, what is, what is the downside of that, if any?
Time would be one, because the closer you get to cold weather, the harder it's gonna be to get up, up, up. But basically, figuring out the cost of this road, you could figure out this cost, take it per mile, measure the length of this road, maybe you've got your price of what, you know, you're looking at for, I mean, what is this road, quarter of a mile long, maybe?
And you'll have to, you'll have to schedule more transporter runs, too.
Right.
Well, that will, might not work, because...
Well, I just know, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I just know from doing paving projects in the past, that companies that we had come over, I'd say, oh, well, while you're here, could you just go over to this side of the island and do this little strip, because that really needs to be done? And they'd say, well, you know, that's gonna take away from the project. And I can't, you know, remember the exact way that they explained it, but they said that that's difficult, to just pick up the operation and move it to another side of the island. I just remember having those conversations, and I know I'm not articulating it well, but I do remember having those conversations, and it's not, it wasn't an easy thing to just get the company to just switch gears and go to a different location.
I mean, if we wanted to do this road, we'd, we'd, we'd add an old pole. And get a toll number on doing this road.
Which will push us off some on this night.
Right.
And then we're gonna be on real limited time, and then the...
What about, about third of the price? About a million and a half?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Two point five million.
Two point five.
I mean, it, it increased each, there were two, couple of different estimates.
Yeah, so we're close to about third of the price.
And, you know, and...
And, and if he screws it up, then he'll be involved.
We know, if he messes up, we know where he lives.
Well, yeah, and I don't, I don't, I don't foresee it getting screwed up.
No, I don't either. I don't, I don't believe that, that's why, it was time to shoot.
Right, I mean, I think that...
I mean, that's also why you have insurance.
I think you guys, you know, we have to, we have to, well, I would like to see you guys entrust in myself and Jake to do our jobs and...
Couldn't mean it was gonna happen.
And do it right, and this, I mean, and, you know, this, this works as well as I expect it to. I mean, it's, tax pay is came to go wrong, saving $2 million on that one road.
Right.
Couldn't mean it worse than what happened to Character's Road, but...
We'll get better from there, right? I mean, I, I just, I don't think that it's that big of a gamble that we have to go play on side roads for ourselves.
I'm not sure if it's a gamble we're talking about, it's more of a demonstration to the town as well.
But do you have other people come and demonstrate on side roads?
Madre. Yes.
What I'm thinking is that, I'm listening to what Millie's saying, and it's gonna throw our timing off, which is also another big issue with paving projects.
Right.
You've gotta, the timing has to be right in terms of getting the weather and keeping the hot, keeping the hot mix warm.
Especially here, where we're four hours on the plane.
Yeah.
You gotta drive from Washington and get on the transporter.
It's a lot. To September, it's gonna get tricky.
Logistics, yeah. Well, and also, do that first part this year. And see how it goes, but if it's...
You can fire, you can fire him, not me. You can fire him after that, if you don't like it.
But, I mean, if it's going well and, and things are looking up, then keep on going, I guess. I, I think we, I personally don't feel that we should take the time to do, yes, I agree, this little street out here is, is a mess falling apart, but if that, it's, time is of the essence, I would prefer that we concentrate on Round the Island Road, myself, that's how I look at it.
I agree.
So I don't know if we wanna have more discussion, or if we wanna vote on this, or what do you...
I think we should do it, okay? And I'm, I'm not opposed to doing it.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to doing it at all, I'm not.
So, the week, how much time would it delay if we did that? Just to give me the idea, what, what, thank you, like, top a couple of days a week?
Let's do this project here.
Yeah, what would be the delay?
Well, I mean, you're gonna have, yeah, you're gonna have a few days ripping it up, and you're also gonna have to wait till your next election's meeting to vote on, correct?
It's not in the puzzle.
Which is close to the window.
I think that, um, also, too, you have to, like, was mentioned, you have to close the road. So it'll make it difficult for people to come and go. I mean, you're gonna have to try to maybe plan, like, a weekend.
We're gonna have to, yeah, we can open up the old emergency access on the road, you know, that might be an excellent project.
Right.
But this could also be a weekend, for you here, the plant's open on Saturdays.
Yeah.
But that would be, you have to hold it in, hold it in, yeah, I mean, it's a deliver.
Yeah, I didn't expect that.
You know, I understand wanting to see it, but at the same time, it's also not rocket science, like, what are people really...
How many times we spend on the wrong up there, so...
All right, well, I think we should vote on this project. And paving proposal. So I'd make, Madre, did you wanna add to it?
No, no.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the paving proposal for Round the Island Road from, uh...
Island excavation.
Yes, thank you. Island excavation.
So, thank you. Follow your favor.
Thank you. Look forward to having a road that...
A road, a road, period.
That's the other point, you have to drive that road anyway, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's such a mess.
It's better when it's full of snow, though, because then that fills all the holes, right?
Yeah. A road and not an obstacle for us.
It might be better to just do it for a while.
Well, it's gonna be for a few weeks, and we'll straighten it out as quickly as we can and get...
I'll tell you, maybe a better road to drive on.
It will be, it will be for a while, yeah. We'll go rain, put down some gravel, and...
Okay, great. Well, sounds like we have a plan and look forward to having the work done. Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to seven, committee and departmental reports and appointments. What did, speakers from the floor, are you already did that, right?
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
What did in Kern?
I don't have any, we usually just put that on there. I don't have any updates.
No, that's good. The downtown project and the Simmons Center.
I haven't seen Dave.
Dave's on vacation this month, so... Yeah, so Swap Shop report, Pat Lundholm.
So we have the, I'm just curious, I have my questions, and it's, it's gonna be very, very busy the last couple of weeks, but, yeah. I think we've got enough nations to cover, I should also, not constantly, you know?
Maybe some empty trucks from that, from the transport, and take some of the...
I, yeah, I thought of that.
Stop at Goodwill on the way over.
They won't mind.
Just dump the truck off the car.
I think you guys, ladies, are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, good. Yeah. Very successful. Good job. Anybody have any more they wanna say about Swap Shop? We only heard good things.
Yes.
Public Works, Millie.
Do you have questions on new reports?
No, I appreciate you doing them for us, though.
How the Beavers doing?
Well, that's, that's actually one of the things that I was gonna talk about. We were able to relocate to mainland, and we worked with an engineer who came up with a design, which would be processing, but he came up with a design and we built it and set it last week, and since then, we have not had any rise... At all. There's some mud up against it, but because we have six inch hole through the, the grates, it doesn't stay. So I think he's given up on building there. But there's a significant amount in there. It's not just one, two or three. We're often, and he says, we learned a lot that he was out here. And he said, usually the parents is usually a male or two, a female or two, and that would be it in that community. And when they have babies after a year, so they kick them out. And they claim their territory and they kick the babies out, so they have to go out school. And he said, but in this case, I don't know if it's a small island or what it is, but everybody seems to be just sticking around in this. And it's like a little commune, and it's like four houses.
Oh, wow, wow.
Throughout the pond, you know, that they're living in and some, one is, there's a few really small ones. And then there's this big mansion of a, of a house on the other end. It's, it's really, I feel like it's impressive to see it all and then understand it, so. But so far, so good. We, you know, of course, the end of one of the culverts is, is a mess because we've had to pull tires through it and run logs through it and everything else breaking up the dams that they put through it. And the roads are roving on the edge, you know, because.
Water does that.
Water does that, you know, so it, it's, it's certainly, the emergency repair is, is certainly not gonna last for long, but Nadja and I were talking today. I've got another little, hopefully something that we can work with to maybe get some funding to help us with some of those areas. Probably in class now. Next week, to learn.
There's a new grant program through Maine Mid Coast Council of Governments to document problem culverts in Knox County and offer some money for planning grants. And one or the other of us will probably, or both of us will watch the, it's an online Zoom meeting about the grant funds and how to, how to be involved. But it's through Mid Coast Council of Governments.
The line painters were supposed to be here, have we done, sorry, something went off.
Oh, you're fine.
Um, line painters were supposed to be here today, but obviously the radar wasn't looking good, so it pushed it off for a week. We'll be out here next week. He's also going to do the school and have the center lines here. There's two different crews. There's a hand crew that does all parking stalls, the handicaps bases, the arrows, and any additional sidewalks that have not been taken care of. And then, and then the line crew comes and they just come through the day and painting the way back, you know, grinding and sealing. I'm not sure, hopefully, whether it will work or tracksy, and then we'll be out for that.
Hey, do you want anything?
Um, if I don't, I can let someone.
The only exit side of the parking lot, I'm sure. I'm, I'm just sitting there putting, putting bottles in for other care, at least two people.
Oh, it happens all the time, the arrows that do not enter on the.
Yeah.
But my concern is, is we really can't, or we shouldn't be driving anything through the tire. And the tire only goes a certain distance before we hit the rocks. So you can't use a post.
Could you put them on the post?
I'm a little concerned about that because those, those pillars you're talking about, they're getting pretty.
A little, little, little fragile.
Yeah, you start, you know, rolling on or taking a, take a ram sack down to them or something.
Yeah, I get you. I understand. It just, it's like, I'm standing there and people are driving right through.
Or when they come out the enter.
They go in the exit. I'm like.
And they come out the other side and that's, you can't see that.
Yeah.
That's my main, my main drive for the, the parking lot designs are to come up with a way to stop that from happening.
You didn't have a stop.
I mean, well, I've got, you know, you can put the little box up here so that, like, it did a pressure thing if they come the wrong way and a box and rock shoots out.
Okay, boom, lights come on.
I want to sit on Main Street and watch that.
But yeah, I, you know, and I hear you, Tom, I hear you, and I, you know, I, it's.
One of those wheels I saw, it started twice in like two minutes.
Exit on the pillar.
I know, I know.
They don't care.
Doesn't.
Happens every year.
And they're not always off islanders who do it either, so.
No, I mean.
Yeah.
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 But, um.
No, the sweeper thing that you opened up.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, I did miss, yes.
Well, I was wondering what.
Yes, I gave you my, if you remember, budget time, I did a five-year plan and where we decided not to be the excavator, I changed things around a little bit. So the two things that I have on it for this year are a new sweeper for the backhoe. We had a twenty-five, twenty-seven-year-old sweeper on the backhoe that has finally died completely and has left us. It'll sit in the middle of my garage floor, but it's left us. It's gonna cost more than it's worth to fix. And a new one, I think I have the price there for you, uh, twenty-three.
Twenty-three and a half.
And this one has, it comes with extra brushes, plus it has the curving brushes. So you can get up against the sidewalks and such. Now, when we had that work and we used it and we used it a lot, made it look great all last summer and the summer before. It saved us six thousand dollars a year for the sweeper to come out once and do the best he could and then leave. You know, and, and like the parking lot, you couldn't do a lot of the parking lot because there was so much there. Whereas, again, you know, it's kind of like with the mowing and everything else. It's, it's something that we can do, it's something that we've done in the past. And I just, I feel very strongly that we should, that we need to do it. And in saying that part, when we get the new drainage system in, the engineers and the designers are telling us already that we should be having all of the lines and manholes vacuumed and jetted twice a year, every spring, every fall. That's gonna be costly. You don't bring a sweeper in on top of it. Or are we gonna do that and continue, I mean, we can do a paintball instead of waiting until June. You know, we can do it again in July before, or July if we need to. You know, we can do side strips that he doesn't. After a good rain, when the intersections like down here on the motorcycle ride, so down here scares me.
In front of the bank.
In front of the bank, it's brutal, you know, those are places that it takes two minutes to throw it on the front of the machine and go. So I feel really strongly that that's something that we need to work with. And then the other thing is our four-wheel drive Dodge truck, which I said this when we bought it, I couldn't find a chassis without a body for the price that we found, that we got. But the sander beats the heck out of the backhoe's trucks. Especially this one, because the tie-down places are so low and so hard to get to that once you get the sander in there, you have to really bite it to get it in place. And it doesn't adjust right in back of the truck, so it's the old one from the other truck. So you can put a new body on it, which was the plan, eventually anyway. And so instead of waiting another year on that, we don't, not doing an excavator, I'm thinking that, let's do it this year and get that out of the way. It's much easier, use of the truck for a hundred and ten years, but I would say the first.
What was the dump on, you said, stop, stop?
Um?
Is it a dump on there?
No, a flatbed.
Yeah.
Yep, don't leave it, well, a, the flatbed works better. We can put signs on it. You get things in the back of the truck.
Yeah.
I mean, for me, I have to climb up in it or make one of them get something out of there. I can't get at it. But on the flatbed, I can walk by the side of it and grab whatever I need.
Yeah.
You know, and we just do the flatbed. We have our own rails that we put on that are movable. It works great.
We, we make flatbed dump.
Yeah.
Stop.
More expensive.
Of course.
Now, no, I think, I think.
Versatile.
Well, it is versatile, but I'm happy with it and I'd actually just have the four thousand dollar body.
Yeah.
Those are the two items that I would like to purchase this year.
Any more questions? So do you want me to make a motion of, to purchase the street sweeper attachment per purchase? I'm sorry? And the, um, flatbed, the aluminum truck body? Is that what, yeah?
So move.
On favor? Those opposed? Would you say?
I was in favor.
Four, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't, I was not very clear on that. I'm sorry. I was just kind of mumbling, but I guess I got through to everybody.
We got it.
What?
Nothing. What? Nothing. All right, are you all set, Millie?
I am.
Okay. We'll move on to E, ambulance report. Ryan.
Um, just to follow up from the conversation I had with Marbury a couple of weeks ago. Our red ambulance rescue three got a not so great diagnosis. We've had Amber come back out again to take a look at it. It's now. First version is, it's not dead in the water right now. It's a usable truck. It is not a reliable truck. And it would be an extremely expensive truck to fix for what it is. Preference, I talked about it, it's a '09, about a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. It starts hard and runs sluggish. It's not the greatest truck of the day. The issue it's having is coolant fluid, the engine oil leaking into the fuel fluid. For the particular model of engine, a six-oh diesel from that timeframe is highly indicative of head gasket leak, which then on that particular model of engine is basic repair. It's hard to get at on the ambulance chassis as well and the wing configuration. You've got to take box off the back, the actual, those are the, do patient treatment. You've got to take the cab off the front to get at the engine. Told by Amber that when you start digging into those engines, you find more and more things that move through the system. A not so expensive repair turns into a very intensive man-hour engine repair, which turned into finding more things that we need to replace. Her suggestion was use it while it's running, which it's gonna run for, of course, in the future. Have a year at least not to properly have it as a second, second use truck. Use it while you can, start the procurement process now to replace it. Which would be my suggestion as well. Last I spoke with Greenwood, ambulances new, are running somewhere from three fifty to you could go crazy and spend as much as four seventy-five. I thought we were two some less than that, but just one truck would spend about four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars on it. That has lots of cells and tissues that we don't particularly need. But probably three fifty to three seventy-five is pretty many for what our requirements are gonna be. Granted, that space, I'll have an estimate as of today, that was in May, like initially having a conversation. It's going on a current day estimate, but. Looking at about a two to three year delivery we go right now, so we ordered today, two, three years from now, trucks here in our garage. That's option one. Option two would be to work with Greenwood and see if we can find a demo truck from them, which is trucks that they've ordered that they have coming. The downside to that is it's not, it's not necessarily gonna hit all the criteria that we'd like to have. Just how we operate out here and specific things we have to think about. There's a couple of features that I want in the truck. It's a job that we truly want to do. Preference would be a custom-built truck on that timeline. I think that helps us in the general shot as well to assist us. We could look at a demo model truck. Do not recommend a used truck right now for the same reason as the fire. What is on the market is why we live a price where it is, and we're gonna get another two thousand twelve for with a hundred and ten thousand dollars on it. We can have the same discussion even though. So I think we're, it's time to take a look at a contract.
Is there a break on a demo? What was the price on the demo?
I think we're about the same range because they're essentially new trucks as well. They're selling their demo units, but we're using other products, so that's why you don't really know what they're gonna get or what they have at a good time because they're selling them almost immediately as soon as they get delivered, not a long process, but about the, the same.
Should we be looking at any potential grants that might help us on this?
Um, Nadja and I looked at, are talking about changing a grant about the main EMS to cover some equipment costs for light packs that I just bought, which would free up some of that money. There's some potential there. We'd like to look into grants to, again, the new truck. It has a timeline, definitely digging into some of that. I think there's plenty of grants out there, just basically.
Which can be worthwhile for that kind of money.
Absolutely, yeah, I agree.
Nadja?
Um, yeah, we, we've applied for grants for, I think primarily fire engines in the past, and we've never been successful. Not to say that we shouldn't apply for whatever's out there, but I think we do a pretty good job of keeping our eyes open for what's available. I don't know if you recall as a board that we'd like to do the same thing with the ambulance that we've done with the fire truck, that we've ordered a fire truck. In other words, we have a contract with Greenwood that we're gonna buy this truck. That's still two years out, is that right?
Yes, two.
And the, and the point is that we manage our reserve fund to make sure that when that truck is delivered, that we've got that cash instead of borrowing money. So what we'd like to do is do the same thing, get an ambulance ordered for us and then just make sure that we build up our reserve funds such that we can just pay for it outright when it gets here.
But that doesn't negate the potential for clients for a grant, even though it's really.
Oh, no, no.
Um, what's in the reserve now?
I was just thinking that I should have brought my reserve book.
That's okay.
Okay.
That's fine. I mean. Tom?
Ryan, can you get a, can you spec out a truck with a firm quote on the final cost? To, to what you want for pictures and benefits?
We can definitely do that and also see what.
Because the demo trucks are basically spec trucks. They're building something and getting it out there. And then, oh, well, you got this one all done, you can have it today if you want that kind of deal. So, yeah, I mean, if, if you had a firm quote on a motor or something, that would be helpful. And then the next meeting, we can see what is in the reserve.
For today, I was wanting to ask what the board's preference was to build a demo truck rather than sooner.
Those six liters are fine, probably.
Yeah.
They were good when they were good, none of them were bad. They were not good at all.
Um, no, actually, they're.
The six fours were a little better than the six sevens.
We don't drive them.
Well, I would say it's a consensus of the board to go ahead and look at, get the price of a new one, yeah? Absolutely. Thanks, Ryan.
Since Millie saved us much money, we can consider it.
Right, see? See? You're welcome on buying too.
Don't get too generous now.
Oh, okay, I just wanted.
Okay. Uh, nine, new business? Seeing nothing here. And ten, report of town manager.
I gave you a few spreadsheets. One is that we finally got from the state of Maine what our legal speed limits are. The, the speed limits that were approved by Maine DOT. So I, I gave you a copy of what they sent me and I'm sure that. I hope the works director will be.
I, I was actually gonna wait until the next meeting after so much, putting on so much on tonight, but now that you brought it up.
Well, I'm just putting it out there. I also just gave you a spreadsheet that analyzes the transfer station tonnage and revenue for the past two years. Just interesting data. At least I, I find it interesting to look at what's happened in the past two years. Some things are surprising, some things are not. I'm still working on the wastewater budget. We don't actually have to do a budget, you know, as a enterprise fund or a fund that is just, we use user fees to pay for our operating costs. But we always do develop a budget as a guideline. And I'm waiting for Maine Water to give me what they believe the capital. I'm waiting for Maine Water to give me, um, what they believe the capital costs will be, you know, this past year, we had to replace a lot of our pumps, we spent about $62,000. Um, we were still in pretty good shape financially in the wastewater department, we've done a lot of, um, collecting of old accounts this past year, which is great. Um, so, I'll, I'm hopeful to, uh, present that to you at the next meeting, and just, as I said, I'm waiting for information from Maine Water as to what the, um, estimated capital costs might be for this next, this coming year. I don't know if anybody has any questions about anything.
Okay. Is that it, Nigel?
Yeah.
Well, 11, report of members. Do we have any complaints, compliments?
Suppose I had a couple.
Looking forward to the dump road being drivable.
Well, everybody likes the speed on the new road, so, watch out.
What you wish for.
Exactly. Okay, wow, this is, uh, Millie, is this it? Number 12, adjourned?
They'll move.
Second? All in favor?
Wow.
I know, this is like a record.
No, we've had shorter meetings.
Ten minutes of six.
This is one of the names.